Good evening. It is 7:31. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Mililani YPO Melamanu Neighborhood Board Number 25 to order. Let us please begin. If you are able, please stand to give the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Good evening, members of the public and board members and members online. Thank you for being with us this night before Leap Day. We know how unique a day like tomorrow is for everyone, so we want to just cherish your time and we greatly appreciate you all being here this evening. Just for some public notice, in accordance with the Sunshine Law, this agenda was posted six days prior to today's meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, so please raise your hands to be recognized by the chair so that I can respectfully call on both people, board members and members of the public in person as well as members, board members and members of the public online in a respectful manner. As a friendly reminder, please keep your questions concise and please begin with your question. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Neighborhood Board Assistant Rachel to go ahead and conduct the roll call so we can establish quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, when I call your name, please state that you're present. Bass?
Present.
Flores? Ka Nihe? Ka Apana Aki? Kim?
Present.
Marilyn Lee? Ozala? Mart?
Here.
Among?
Here.
Freed? Roder?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
Mari? Park?
Here.
Lee? All right, Darsha Lee.
Present.
Stefan? Ross?
Here.
Ahina?
Sorry, here for Ross.
I'm sorry, what's that? Brother Ross, he said. Okay.
Correct, I'm here.
Is...
Anne Frey is here.
And Dow? Nakamine?
Here.
Serchina?
Present.
Sigra?
Here.
Uuka? Okay, so we have a total of 15 board members, so we do meet the quorum.
I didn't hear my name, Carmody.
Oh, you're there. Let me just double check if I checked you all. No. So now with you, I have 16 members now.
Are there any other board members who haven't heard their name or weren't recorded in the roll call? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much, Rachel. All right, we're going to move on to monthly reports. I'd like to recognize the Honolulu Fire Department. Is there a representative from HFD either here in person or available online? Okay, I'm getting word from our esteemed council member who is Chair of Public Safety that HFD got a call, so we wish them the best tonight and let's hope that everyone's safe. Next up, we have Honolulu Police Department. I see Corporal Munna is here. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Corporal Munna, District Two, Community Policing Team. First statistics for February, as far as calls for service in the Mililani area, so far we're at 712. Of course, that includes just miscellaneous calls, things that might not require a police report as well, but 712 calls for service for February. Burglaries, we're at four. UEMVs, which is unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, basically vehicle break-ins, we're at two. Assaults, seven. Robberies, zero. And for all other statistics, please visit honolulupd.org. Not only do they have the crime mapping website that I mentioned in the past, but now they have that data dashboard, which is also a really good tool to use to find new statistics that weren't available prior. And for tonight's safety tips, I kind of wanted to go over defensive driving. Unfortunately, we've been, seems to be having a lot of motor vehicle collisions lately, not only within the district, but it seems like it's kind of island-wide, so. First things first, safety first. When you're driving, I know there might be a lot of distractions. Kids might be having a lot of fun in the backseat, might be engaged in a really heavy conversation, or you know you got that appointment deadline to get to, but just remember, please, safety first, you know. A lot of things can happen when you're behind the wheel. Be aware of your surroundings. Aggressive drivers that might be driving kind of erratic. You know, watch out for them. Watch out for being in people's blind spots. Try and scan every 20 seconds, mirrors, you know, with your eyes in front of you, things like that. Please follow the three to four second rule as far as following a vehicle in front of you, and again, that's just in best weather case scenario. And when it comes to that, brake, try and brake slowly too, because even though you might see the vehicle slowing down and you might think to yourself, okay, I know when to brake. Just remember that the people behind you won't react until they usually see your brake lights as well, and that kind of starts a chain reaction, so. Brake gradually and slowly as soon as you can if you know you're going to have to slow down. And finally, kind of like I mentioned earlier, distractions. A lot of distractions can happen when you're driving. Arguments, texting, you know. Hopefully not, but drinking and driving, all those things. Cut all that out. If you're in an argument, try and find a place to pull over or, you know, maybe table it until you can talk back home or something like that. Texting can always wait, and definitely no drinking and driving. And aside from that, please drive safe, drive defensive, and that's all I have for safety tips.
Mahalo, Corporal Munna. Members of the board, are there any questions for HPD? Oh, go ahead, Member Dow.
They say that pedestrian accidents are on the rise, but I noticed a lot of people look at a stoplight, they'll see a walk sign and just walk. They never, ever look to see if a car is coming. I'd say 99% of the people never look. I mean, it would be good to mention, you gotta look in case somebody didn't see the light or whatever.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. Pedestrian safety is an entirely different thing that I think is just as important. I see that all too often. Even though there was a law that came out, I still see, you know, people looking at their phones as they're crossing the crosswalk, which is a sightable offense. People, you know, coming out from a corner, not even looking to see if there's a vehicle coming. So just as important, like you said, as defensive driving, is just being a defensive pedestrian and being aware of traffic as well. I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from members of the board? I see that Darsha, Member Darsha Lee has her hand online. Following Darsha, Member Mary's mark. Go ahead, Darsha.
Aloha. Thank you very much for the updates and for being here this evening. I did have a question about the items that were stolen out of the police vehicle in Kuniya and if they had any updates on the recovery of the items.
That's a good question. It's very important, and I'm glad you brought that up. I haven't heard any updates. And fortunately, as far as I know, I can't be 100% sure, but it seems like it might have been a little while since any kind of impersonating a police officer situation happened. But that's exactly what could happen in a situation like this, which is why it was so important to get all the information out. I mean, unfortunately, the suspect has the entire kit, you know, he has everything. He has the uniform, he has the badge, gun, jacket, cap, shield, belt, everything, so. Please stay vigilant. If you see anybody with that name approach, definitely let 911 know immediately. But I don't have any updates, though, unfortunately, as far as that case goes.
Thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay, the recreational cannabis bill is going through the legislature, and we know that it's still a federal offense to have cannabis. I was wondering if HPD had a position on the passing or not passing of that bill?
That, unfortunately, I can't speak on. In my position, when a law is a law, that's when I come in. As far as bills, that's well above my pay grade, so I don't really have a stance I can mention on that. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I read there's 400 vacancies in the police. Is that true?
The number off the top of my head, I believe, is somewhere around there, yeah.
And how is that, what percentage is that of the total?
Percentage, I'm not too sure, but it definitely, you can see it. When we had the discussions earlier about minimum staffing and shortages and things like that, that was always a part of the discussion. At the end of the day, for this district, ideally, we would never want to operate on minimum staffing, although, as a reminder, minimum staffing is, it's not as bad as it sounds. It's approved staffing. You just don't want to dip below it, but ideally, filling those 400 vacancies, you'd never really have to deal with minimum staffing. We'd have a full roster. I don't know what the percentage is exactly. I do know that they're working on, as far as their recruitment goes, they're doing a lot of new things and different things to try and get new officers in. I think the retention part, I'm not too sure where that is, so I think if they can close both ends, you might see some numbers go up.
Any members of the community who have any questions or concerns they'd like to share with HPD this time? Oh, Emil, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, there is 2,200 uniformed officers positioned and 400 are vacant, so we're talking about 20%.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that point. Chair has a concern I'd like to relay. I was contacted by a Mililani resident who lives nearby the Hoku Ahi Ahi Park. Apparently, there's been after-hours loitering in that park. The Mililani, or the resident has called HPD multiple times and did not see a response. So just relaying on behalf of that resident, could we, you know, as much as we're patrolling and increasing our police presence here in our Mililani community, and thank you for that, can we also start checking in a little more on the parks within our community to just reduce the loitering and any potential illegal activities or even loud noises after hours?
Absolutely. Will do. I couldn't agree more. It's one of those things where it might start off as something like loitering, but with that whole broken window theory, you gotta catch it when it's small before it turns into something big. The timing's perfect, because our team actually does overnights every, maybe once a week, and tonight, we're actually on duty, so specifically for park closure type situations like that. So we'll definitely hit this tonight and see if anybody's over there, and we'll cite accordingly.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, we're going to move on to US Army Combat Aviation Brigade, 25th Infantry Division. I see that we have a representative from US Army Garrison here in person tonight, and that we also have, there was a Major Ball here online, so ma'am, would you like to be recognized in person in Major Ball? Could you work in accordance with Army Garrison? Is that okay? Go ahead. Well, the two of you can. Yes, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Selena Jentkowski. I'm the Community Relations Specialist with US Army Garrison Hawaii, and I'm here tonight to attend this meeting.
Wonderful. Okay, and so shall I just take it, recognize Major Ball here as well? Okay, Major Ball, please go ahead. Thank you for being here online. I love the wonderful attendance from the US Army tonight.
Trying to make sure that we're out there in the community and getting the message across and be able to field questions from the team here. Two minute points that I want to highlight. First is the upcoming March Job Fair that's going to be held in the Mililani High School on March 19th, 8:30 a.m. to 2 p.m., standard job fair that the Hawaii NWR Morale Welfare Recreation Facility does. They will be hiring open to the public and available for people to come in, bring a resume, and see where we're at. The other main point that we want to talk on is the recent training that occurred on Schofield. Back in the middle of January, a lot of late-night noise that happened. I understand there was a lot of concentration from the community due to the late notice of the events. It really, first off, want to apologize to the community for the late notice on the training and try to talk it a little bit. During the middle of January, there was a greatly elevated fire risk that was happening, and so out of an abundance of caution to not set any wildfires on the ranges there, needed to delay that training to be later on in the evening period in order to get, you know, cooler temperatures, lower winds, prevent the risk of fire that was spreading, and so that was the decision made by the unit to go a little later. We do want to make sure that we're being mindful of the community and our partners as well across the board, so we'll strive to get better at the messaging there. Just making sure that when we do that live fire training, it's notified, it's coordinated, so that way at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, it's not, hey, what's going on? It's, we knew this was going to happen because of the night train that was going to occur. But those are really the two main points that I have, but I'll field questions from the group.
Members of the board, are there any questions for Major Ball? I see that Member Ross online has a question. Please proceed.
Aloha. I've noticed that on Cam Highway, there's, looks like you guys are doing the new construction on the gate. Looks like the old gate was ripped out on Cam Highway between Mililani and YPO on the right-hand side, and I was just wondering, is there an estimated date of when a new gate's going to be put in? Are you guys going to be monitoring it more? Are you guys going to be sending over your normal patrols and how often will your patrols be going out?
Okay, you know, I don't have an answer to that right now, but I'm taking some notes. I'm going to link in with our community rep there and get those answers back for you. We work over on Wheeler, so I don't actually deal a lot with that gate. But I will, I got a note taken for next month's meeting. We'll have an answer, and the rep, which will probably be me again, will be able to respond to that one.
I do have a clarifying question. Which gate exactly is he talking about? One right off of, just right out here?
No, no, no. So as you're in...
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Member Ross.
So as you're exiting Mililani, heading towards YPO Gentry, on the right-hand side, on the west side, as you're going down Kamehameha Highway, down the gulch, that entire land on the right-hand side is Army property. And as Mike Dowd can probably point out to you as well, there was a gate there that somebody completely busted open and actually yanked out some of the concrete where the gate you guys had blocked off. It looks as though they have completely removed that gate, and it looks like they're in the process of installing a whole new gate system. There's two giant holes there. I see construction trucks every once in a while over there. That's where we had our homeless population that was moving in, that we had to work with city, county, state, as well as a couple homeless coordinators to allow those individuals to move out to get to a new residence, as well as remove all the debris that was over there. They've been cut that, they've cut that lock multiple times. I'm guessing that's why you guys are upgrading to a new locking system. I just don't really know what kind of timeframe we're looking at, because right now it's just completely wide open, and anybody can drive in there.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, are there any other members of the board who have any questions or concerns they'd like to share with the US Army at this time?
Honey, I got my hand up.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Anne. I'd like to recognize Anne. Go ahead, please. Head and ask your question, and then we'll follow with Member Dennis Kim. Go ahead, Anne.
Aloha, Army. Thank you for being here. So curiosity, I'm sure I'm not the only retiree who'd like to know the answer to this. When does the, or is the main gas station going to be completed?
I'm going to defer to the user hall rep in the room. She may know the answer better than I, because it is still quite a ways out, but I don't want to say the wrong thing if she's got more information.
Are you talking about the main gas station on Schofield Barracks?
Anne, did you hear the question?
All right, I muted. Yes, I'm talking about that one.
Yes.
Yes, she is. Okay. Um, I don't have, I do know the answer, but I don't have that specific answer ready, so that'll have to come at the next Neighborhood Board, or we can send it to the Chair, and she can provide that answer for you if you need it.
How about, oh.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Why don't you email me the response, and I can forward it on to the board, and you can also, Army Garrison can also bring that back up in the March meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Dennis, I see that your hand's raised. Go ahead.
Yes. I just, one quick question. What unit are you with right now? Major Ball?
I am with the 25th Combat Aviation Brigade on Wheeler.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the board who have any questions or concerns for the US Army? Are there any members of the community that have any questions or concerns for the United States Army? Chair has a question, or has a concern to relate to Major Ball as well as Selena, please, from Army Garrison. Thank you, Major Ball, for sharing the Mililani residential concerns about noise, and especially with the mortar explosions going on after hours, you know, and well early into the morning. I received multiple calls on that issue as well from many Mililani residents, and many of those mortar fires were actually after 10:00 p.m., as well as as early as 2:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the morning. This was, you know, quite, you know, this woke up many Mililani residents and, you know, was a bit of a security concern. So if at all possible for the United States Army to consider possibly reducing the amount of mortar fire, especially in the early morning, late evening hours between 10:00 p.m. and, you know, 8:00 in the morning, that would be really beneficial to have that message relayed back to the many battalions and units working on their, you know, trainings. That would be wonderful if you could reduce that amount of activity at those times. Is that doable?
So I will bring the message back, and while we can definitely take steps to reduce the, you know, the amount of noise and the firing that's happening between that 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. time, a lot of the training has to do with how do we train soldiers for fatigue, for late-night operations, for being able to operate after 20, 22 hours. So while, you know, some of it is, hey, we need to shoot at night for qualification, that can be done early in the evening. As part of the training, sometimes it needs to be a little bit longer. But what we will do is make sure that when these deliberate training events are done, that are after those kinds of hours, that we're getting ahead of it, we're messaging it to the community so that it doesn't come as a shock and a surprise, like I know the one back in January did, because it was on forecast, and that was, you know, not well-received, and that will execute on our part. So we'll make sure that we're getting that message out and limiting the amount of, you know, midnight plus training that's happening, specifically with the mortars and the artillery fires.
All right. Thank you so much, Major Ball. Actually, I see that Les has his hand up. Let's keep this brief, folks. I see that I have multiple board members, so Les, followed by Member Dow, and then Member Freed, so go ahead.
As we reach spring and summer, are you thinking there's going to be more military exercises as we move toward the summer?
So in the early summer, I do think we're going to have more, and I will say, looking at the June time period, where we typically go out to the Big Island and do some larger training events at PTA over there. This year, those events are going to happen on Oahu due to some budgetary constraints and not able to fund barge movements and shipments to get the training happening on the Big Island. So I would expect to see an increased training volume and density happening in June on the island around Schofield. And again, we'll make sure that we get more details as we get closer to that June time period to ensure the community is aware and tracking.
Okay, budgeting problems. Wow. Okay, thank you.
Mike, then Anne.
Yeah, I think that mortar fire, or everybody heard it in January because the winds were coming out of the west. Normally with a trade wind pattern, you hardly hear anything here. So that's one of the physical nature of the thing.
Thank you. Anne?
So we hear it in Waikalani, no matter what. Oh, I just wanted to make a comment is that, yeah, of course, I was, it was really, really, really loud. But it's 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. in the morning, which I'd never seen it before, but as Major Ball said, I just want to point out that this was a one-off in that they were being cautious about wildfire, which, you know, I don't want us to forget and get complacent that we are in danger on this island from wildfire, and we're going to need the Army's help on and off when that happens. So I just appreciate your service, Major Ball. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any final comments, or excuse me, questions or concerns from the board or the community at this time for the United States Army? Yes, Selena?
Um, so, you know, we do recognize that there is a lot of inconvenience for the local community, and I just want to make sure that we're sending out the messaging in an appropriate way. So right now, we're sending all of our media announcements to anybody who calls in or writes us an email that wishes to subscribe to any training advisory. So if you do not have, or you're not on the distribution list to be, or to receive the training advisories, please make sure you email us, and we will make sure that you get it in a timely manner. I'm recognizing that we're here at the very end of the month when all of the training has occurred, and we won't put out the next training advisory until the first of the month, this coming month. So if there's any other way that we can provide that information, please let us know, other than just sending it to the Chair or the local community.
Thank you so much, Selena. Thank you for being here tonight. Mahalo, Major Ball. Uh, we're going to move on and recognize if there is, I don't see Kathleen here tonight in person from the Honolulu...
But I'm here online.
You're online. Welcome. Please proceed, Kathleen. Thank you.
Aloha. I have no main breaks to report for this past month, and just a reminder about our $100 toilet rebate that is ongoing through April 18th, and that is my report. Any questions?
Uh, members, any questions for Honolulu Board of Water Supply? Jump for it. All right, any members of the community who have any questions for the Board of Water Supply at this time? All right. Well, Kathleen, it was nice and quiet for you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Aloha.
Thank you. We're going to move on in our agenda to community concerns at this time. Are there any community members who would like to come forward and express any comments or concern? Of course, within decorum at this time, I see, ma'am, would you like to, please, please approach the microphone, introduce yourself, and address the board for the record on your concern? Thank you.
I'm Judy Kawamura. I've lived in Mililani for about 44 years, and I've had some issues with the trees, the city and county trees. In March, on March 8, 2023, there were 28 trees in Mililani alone that fell, and I was the unlucky one, I guess, the only one that had a tree fall on my home. And it also was braced by the so-called community wall that I assume was owned by Mililani Town, but I'm finding out that it may not be. But anyway, I'm going through the process of filing my claim with the city and county, and the first report and denial was that the arborist went around in May, I think September of '22, and did not acknowledge that my tree was a problematic tree. So they denied my claim that the tree was responsible for the damage. So I started to seek out into the community, and I finally reached the mayor's office, and Maria, who is, I guess, assigned to review my case, is going to read over the problem and the situation and get back to my insurance, but it's a real long process. I mean, I encourage people to do it, but, you know, it's like very hairy. And then in the process, I found out that the arborist goes around with the private tree trimmers, but the arborist is supposed to examine the trees and listen if there's water, and during the past year, it was drought, and so the trees never got water from the bottom and the roots, so they were spreading out on the side to get some water. And reading some of the ordinance, it stipulates who's supposed to maintain the trees, but doesn't say too much about the watering. And so I started to look it up, and even ordinance, I never heard that word ordinance before, and I started delving into what is ordinance? And I started delving into what is ordinance? And I'm finding out more and more that even the community wall that we assume that is not ours, that it's the Mililani Town's wall, now is going to be our responsibility. And so I just want to let people know, because I don't think the community people know that they're response, responsible for the maintenance of these walls. And um, Val Okimoto, I reached out to her office and at first I thought, wow, I'm not responsible, Mililani Town is, but Mililani Town was denying it. So I called Castle and Cook. Castle and Cook had no records of who owned it. And so now Val is starting to give me a little bit more information, but I haven't gotten the full response yet. But it's, it's really confusing because um, and I found out that the council people make up all these ordinances that I'm sure many of the citizens in Mililani don't even know. And and then I found out, well, whose responsibility is that? Is that our responsibility? And where do we look for it? So this is my concern, is that I want to educate people in the community that these are all things that are occurring that many of us that have lived here for many years don't realize that these things are changing and the responsibilities are shifting. And now I'm thinking, if I had a choice of buying a property now, I wouldn't buy a home with a community wall that they build, because I always thought it was Mililani Town. But it changed hands from Castle and Cook to Mililani, and that's where I'm not sure what happened. So I just want to warn people and make people realize that there are changes that people need to know about. And I'm not sure who's going to let us know.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kawamura, for coming here tonight and educating us all on this. I'm sorry to hear about your roof. Um, but I'm very grateful to see our council member Val Okimoto here tonight. So perhaps during uh, your elected officials' report, you can touch on um, whatever work you've been uh, coordinating with Mrs. Kawamura on, as well as the city. Um, what I I checked online, unfortunately, our city's mayor rep is not online right now or here in person. What I can do is I can just get in touch with her to just check on your uh, complaint filed with the city.
Maria called me. She, I guess, was assigned by the mayor's office. She's with the, is that corporate council?
Yep.
And I've been talking with them and see, my insurance is on the mainland. So I I wasn't notified until I reached out to them to let me know. And they said, oh, yeah, they were ready to close the case. I said, how can you close the case when it's not settled? And they said they don't go into legal issues like getting a lawyer. But I said, you know, as a last resort, I would do that. But right now, I mean, everybody, we we met with the um, deputy director of the parks and the new um, administrator Adams. And um, we discussed this with her and some of the other staff. And they even went around our area in in the community and chopped down three more trees. So you cannot say the arborist is doing their job, because look, 28 trees and three more after that. You know, and they're supposed to check, but all I see when they do come is they stand afar. And then when you ask them, can you trim this? Can you trim that? They say, oh, no, it's going to kill the tree. Then they're in their van, sitting. And I said, they never go to the trunk and push or listen, because they said you can hear water. I don't know. I've never gone to the trunk. But usually the trend is to, the roots go down. But because there's no water, you know, there's, they're going outwards and they're short. I was amazed. The bulldozer just pushed it and the thing fell down. So now I found out I'm responsible for the wall. I I I have to.
Thank you. Thank you again for bringing this up. I'm going to just uh, open it up to maybe one, oh, one or two questions if there are any from the board and any follow-up uh, questions they'd like to ask Ms. Kawamura at this time. Uh, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, do you know what type of tree it is? Is it like a monkey pot or a shower tree?
It was an agreement between city and county and Castle and Cook. And so that's why we have these trees hanging from our hangings. And the trees, every year flower. They have these little nuts. The branches fall down.
I'm sorry. Can you speak in the mic?
Oh, the leaves are plentiful. And I mean, we're raking it and it's frustrating. And so a lot of people, not lot, a few people have cut the trees uh, down without anonymity. But they're so frustrated. And that's my concern is, you know, we don't want to do that. We want to abide by the rules of Mililani but, and the city and county, but sometimes there's no recourse. I mean, you go around, like, I've been going around in circles, going back and forth, calling people up. I've never done this before. And I'm thinking, maybe I should be on the neighborhood board, but um, I'm too busy. I'm doing, I'm sorry.
Behalf of all of us. You can, you know, next vacancy, I'll, I'll.
Because I'm, I'm so busy, even retired. I'm doing case management for family, friends, relatives, you know. It's just quite a bit.
Uh, is there any final questions just to follow up? Go ahead, Marilyn.
Thanks for coming. Um, are you on the perimeter? Is your wall that you're talking about on the perimeter, so there's a large road, street there? It's, it's not just, you know, a neighborhood. It doesn't, doesn't join anybody else's neighborhood.
It's throughout the whole back, everybody. So I have to notify them. If we're going to responsible for maintenance, I'm sure they're going to be up at arms, because we bought it knowing that that was not our land, our property or our wall. And we were told not to do anything to even add bricks. I have added, but it's not glued, so it can just fall over.
Okay, thank you.
You know, so now I'm finding out I'm responsible for the maintenance. I said, I can't believe this. So.
Well, I'm impressed with your research. I've known you for a long time. I'm impressed.
Thank you so much. Are there any other residents with, who would like to share any community concerns at this time? Yes, Sabrina?
Evening, members of the board and public. I'm here as a general member of the community uh, due to a concern that I have regarding the representation that's been coming to our meetings. Um, over the past 13 months, there's been 11 opportunities for representatives and elected officials to attend our meetings. And because of Chair Bass's efforts, they could be on Zoom or in person, which is very accessible. And I'd like to go over some statistics of what's happened over the last 11 opportunities. Um, I'm sure, as you're aware, we've had representatives from HPD, HFD, um, uh, governor's office, as well as the mayor's office be representative here, as well as Board of Water Supply. But our elected officials seem to not even make it to 50% of our meetings, some of them. So um, council member Okimoto has attended five. Council member Ware has attended one. Senator Kandani has attended one. Senator De La Cruz has attended zero meetings for us in person. Uh, Representative Peruso has attended nine. Representative Matsumoto has attended 10. And Representative Lachica has attended four, although she's only had 10 opportunities because of when she was um, appointed. So I'd like to demand that this um, board ask our representative to be present for our community concerns, so that our representatives can be accountable to us at least 50% of the time. I don't think 50% is unexpected or unreasonable. Um, I would like to see more 70 to 75% with the ability to attend via Zoom in person. But I don't really understand why they're not attending at least 50% of the time. There's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I stand.
Members of the board, any questions for Sabrina? I see that uh, both Dennis has a hand up and Elise. Go ahead, Dennis and Elise. Uh, following Dennis.
Okay, my question is, is there a requirement that our representatives attend in person?
So there's no. There's no requirement that I'm aware of that our board demands that the representatives attend or anything like that. I think that it's their obligation to be a member of the community that's elected them and attend. And we request that people attend. Every month, we put them on the agenda, but there's no official requirement that they have to perform.
Okay, then the other question. Many of them also have representatives to attend on their behalf, because they're tied up with a lot of other official uh, requirements. And some of the people that may, should have been in attendance are probably members, you know, uh, they have several boards that they belong to. So they may not physically be able to go to all the boards that they belong to. But that's my, you know, my comment on this.
That is a very good point. So our representatives may be overwhelmed and not able to represent the community officially if they're unable to be here in person. But I think it needs to be made aware to the members of the voting community that they are overwhelmed and unable to attend in person, maybe because they are overextended. Um, when I was going through the minutes, I did find that when a representative assistant is attending the meeting, are questions asked of them by the board that are not followed up on by the next meeting. Trevor is pretty much the only one that ever brings back responses from Senator Kandani's office regarding board concerns. Other people may be following up with board concerns via privately email or on the side. But in public, the public image is that the representative is not here, so the question is going unanswered.
Okay, got your point.
Okay, I see Elise has her hand up. I also see that Darsha uh, has her hand up. So go ahead, Elise.
Um, Sabrina, just wondering, clear to me whether you're counting attendance if they have a representative there or not?
No, this is attendance only of the the representative or the elected official in person or via Zoom, so they themselves. And the reason why it's 13 months, um, in 11 opportunities, because we recess for July and December.
Darsha, go ahead.
I just had a clarifying question. When you say in person, are you saying the actual representative comes to the meeting or they are actually at Milani High School in like, physical presence?
No, so it's just that the representative was either at the meeting in person or via Zoom. So that they did the presentation themselves, not had an assistant do it.
Any other members of the board who would like to uh, have any follow-up questions to Sabrina at this time? Uh, Sabrina, your demand is noted by the chair and um, what I can do, if you can provide me that language, I could I'm, I'm, and members, pardon me, I'm just thinking on the fly here. Um, I could send a a letter to all of our elected officials, um, and officials representing our our community, providing uh, the statistics that Sabrina relayed to us tonight. I will cite the uh, YouTube um, uh, point in time, so that should they have any questions, they can look at this uh, YouTube recording and discussion. And hopefully, what 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 I can do through this letter is encourage our elected officials to uh, be more engaging with our neighborhood board. Does that, does that sound okay? Sabrina, members, you guys okay with that? Okay, sounds good. Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, well, it is a crazy time at the legislature with the, you know, with the uh, legislative deadlines coming up in March and April. But this is, you know, we're all one community and we need to work together. Okay, I see that we have another uh, concern from our community.
Good evening, Chair, board members, audience. I'm Josie Kaanehe. And um, I have some concerns. We are supposed to be the aloha state, but yet we complain. We complain we have too many birds. We have too many chickens. We have too many cats. We have too many homeless. We complain about the military being so loud. But we really need to be mindful on the words that we say, because it matters. When you complain so much, people think it's okay for them to take it upon themselves to kill, torture, shoot the birds, the chickens, the cats, even the dogs, harass the homeless, and they don't want it in their backyard. I attended the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board Meeting last night. Uh, they were complaining about the homeless, you know, they don't want it in their backyard. They're complaining about people feeding animals. Um, there was more support regarding the animals on that part. I was really impressed. But someone was so angry that they left that board meeting and they went, they graffitied, don't feed the cats, toxoplasmosis kills monk seals. They shot the cat. And they shot the cat and they left it there. This is also happening in Milani. There's somebody going around Milani with, using a 22, shooting cats. Um, I'm involved in animal rescue. I've seen so many dogs shot and dumped on the side of the road. Uh, cats, same thing, bow and arrows in them in our community. This is happening here too. It's unacceptable. We are not the aloha state. We are not the aloha state. If your family members, your kids, your friends are doing things like this, not acceptable. Cases where you have people that are serial killers, they've all started off with animals. They all start off torturing animals. I ask that you watch your words, same for the elected officials, on what you say. Talk to your kids, talk to your friends, talk to your family. This is not acceptable. And it's on the screen of that picture. It's horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Members, are there any questions for Josie to follow up? You have a comment? Go ahead, Sabrina.
Um, there's also um, a fear amongst the community members, if I report it, something's going to happen to me. If I say something, something's going to happen to me. If I don't say something, somebody else is going to say something. I encourage you, if you know of this happening, or if you know of any instance of crime in general. HPD has a great Crime Stoppers app that you can upload um, a photo of anonymously. You can take it with your cell phone on the side. You can upload it even um, right away and they can follow up on it, especially if you have um, documenting information of, you know, something you can zoom in on or clear street signs or something like that. Not saying something is just as bad as letting something like this happen. So if you do know of friends, families, individuals that are doing this and you don't want to say anything to them personally, please do so through um, HPD's Crime Stopper app or to an HPD officer who maybe can follow up with that individual. Um, it takes the community to make changes and allowing this to happen is not the change that we want to have occur.
A very good point. Just want you to know with Crime Stoppers, when you communicate with them, they assign you a number. You could literally call up and say, I mean, you could email call up, and I know who killed someone. They're not going to take your name. They're not taking your information. They assign you a number that you communicate with. Even when the complaint sheets go in, it says anonymous, unless you don't want to be anonymous. There, it's, there's nothing to track you.
Okay, thank you, Josie. Any, is there a final question or concern from board members for Josie or members of the community? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, thank you so much for bringing this up. Are there any other members of the community who would like to raise any concerns or events within the community? Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie, and um, member of, community member. I just wanted to thank um, the police officer that heard my complaint about the e-bikes. And also, um, you folks listened to my concern about the bathroom by the Coal Academy and Maka, Maka PP Street. Well, anyway, it's, it's lit up like a torch. I just wanted to thank you for that. And thank the patrol officers in that area that I live in, the e-bike. The e-bike, um, issue seems to be decreased, so just wanted to bring that up and say thank you so much. And thank you for, um, giving us the information about helping animals and whatever other concerns we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of this community who would like to share any concerns or events in our community at this time? Seeing, oh, no, I see a hand up. Uh, Nicole Miyahara, please, go ahead.
Aloha and good evening, Chair, Board members and neighborhood residents. My name is Nicole Miyahara and I'm a student at Kapialani Community College. I'm also a resilience core leader and researcher for the Center for Resilient Neighborhoods, uh, Seri. We are a community-based research center located at Kapialani Community College and work with the Department of Regional Planning at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. We are also working with the Honolulu Office of Climate Change, Sustainability and Resiliency and many other community partners across the island. We've been attending neighborhood board meetings islandwide since 2021. And I'm happy to be back to share an update on the Oahu Community Resilience Hub Network Project, formerly known as Action 15 from the Ola Resilience Strategy. As far as the project update goes, we can share some links in the chat and make sure that the board has copies. We've worked across all eight sustainable planning regions and have identified over a hundred and fifty-six possible hub locations on Oahu. To date, we have hosted over two hundred engagement events and of those, we had sixteen neighborhood level workshops we put on with local partners and hosts. Our big update right now is that the final Resilience Hub Network Report is now published and available on the city's website. You can find the link in the chat. We'll keep it brief for tonight, but we just wanted to come and share this report as a follow-up to our resilience workshop we've held in your neighborhood. And we're happy to share a full, more comprehensive presentation of findings if you'd like us to share at a later time. Uh, mahalo nui for having me. If there are any questions, please feel free to send them in the chat and I or our co-coordinator will reply. But we look forward to hearing from you soon and mahalo again for your time.
Members of the board, are there any, uh, quick follow-up questions for Nicole and Seri at this time? Members of the community, any questions? Seeing none. No, uh, that is a separate, uh, item provided by another organization. Okay, so seeing none, um, thank you so much, Nicole, for making that presentation. Why don't, uh, we coordinate? And, um, unfortunately, we have some, uh, jam-packed agendas for the March and the April meetings. So probably later in, um, May or potentially June, we could have a presentation, um, to highlight this, uh, this effort as well as, uh, Rachel, could you make sure that these links are in our minutes so that, um, we make sure that this, these, uh, these, uh, references are available for the public? Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the community who would like to report of any community concerns or events within our district? No? Okay, I think that was, that was probably, that was six we received, so that's the most we've had in quite some time. We're going to move on. Thank you for, everyone for sharing these concerns. We're going to move on to the approval of meeting minutes. I'm going to recognize our secretary, Sabrina Gustafson, for, for this motion to approve.
Um, the January minutes were sent out with the February agenda. Nobody's approached me with any changes, so I present them as is. Can I get a second? I moved to approve. Can I get a second?
Second. Oh, okay, so we're in discussion on the vote. You have a question, Mary?
Yes, um, is it new that the person who asked the question doesn't get identified?
Correct. That was the change to keep it so that, um, people just don't rely on the minutes. They then go, if they like what the question is, they want to know more about the question, they go to the timestamp in the minutes. And then they watch it and they get the answer because I've summarized the question. It's not word for word. So I don't want to be, you know, putting words in people's mouths.
Any other, uh, points of discussion on this vote? Les, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that was my concern too, that the PowerPoints didn't identify who the person was asking the question, just in case, uh, board members wanted to follow up with the person on a quite, you know, certain issues he was asking. I would vote to approve it as it is, but I really would like to identify who's asking the question so we know who the person is, you know? And it's on record, at least the last name of the person, you know, if possible. Thank you.
I'm not understanding why the last name of the person would be important to know because they are asking the question.
So people can identify in the community and in the audience on, on the, you know, channel on the cable. And if they come across the neighborhood board person and they, they remember him asking the question or they seen it in the minutes. And they wanted to follow up on some concern that of the question that he had asked to identify him. Instead of, uh, going to each member individually and go, "Did you ask that question?" Or, "Wasn't you?" "Did you ask that question?" Or, "Wasn't you?" Or, "Did you ask that?"
Yeah.
And at least we identified a person that, that, that's what I'm trying to do, to identify who the question came from.
I think you're, you're hinting to, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that if a member of the community watches Olelo and sees the video that's happening or just looks up the minutes online, they want to know who asked the question?
If they don't see the video on TV to see who actually asked the question, but somehow through social gatherings or reading the minutes, knowing who the neighborhood board person is who asked the question. And they wanted to talk to that person in person about what conclusions they came to, to asking that question. Instead of one, not knowing who the person was and is, how many of us, twenty-something people on the board or whatever? That way they can totally identify the person with the question.
So I would point them again to the YouTube video as the most accurate representation of what's happening at the meeting. And when they go to the YouTube video, they'll be able to see who asked the question and identify with that person visually.
I will.
People that are blind, they can't see on YouTube. They can't see, they're blind.
Les, we had a robust discussion on this, I believe it was in November and the January meetings regarding the changes, uh, that the Neighborhood Commission Office had with, with, uh, the minutes. And this is what our board did, we, uh, through that robust discussion, our board did agree to, uh, provide these minutes, which are, uh, which do provide summary statements, which our secretary works on a monthly basis to doing that. So this is an agreement we made, um, and I just wanted to remind you of that. And, and feel free to take a look at the YouTube, um, in November and January where that.
I'm just concerned about people that are blind, that are blind people that can't see YouTube and they would like to know who the person is, you know?
Thank you.
Through other means, you know?
Thank you. All right, I see that there's some, uh, more discussion, uh, from Member Darsha Lee. Your hand is raised?
I just have the most minor thing to point out. It's under, um, Representative Lichika's portion, second item under her questions, comments and concerns. Just the spelling of Kipapa, just missing an A. That was it.
I got that changed.
Great, so we have a motion to approve. We have a second. We've just completed discussion. Uh, members, is, are there any members opposed to the minutes is drafted? Are there any extensions? Seeing none, the minutes passed. Thank you so much, members. We're going to move on to the presentation of community service awards. I'm going to turn this, uh, portion of the meeting over to our Chair of the Community Recognition and Service Awards, Josie Kaanehe. Josie?
Hi, um, Tyson Chan is not available tonight, but we were gonna, we are recognizing him because, uh, there was a pickleball game going on. And he walked onto the course for the very first time as the guy collapsed and went into cardiac arrest. He performed CPR and, um, he essentially saved this guy. The guy lived. Uh, other people that were present when this happened turned around and took CPR classes after this and got themselves certified because of it. Um, but that's why we're recognizing him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Josie. And congratulations and thank you, Tyson, for your community service. Uh, we're going to move on to the reports of chairs and board committees. Uh, for the chairs' reports, uh, members, I do have, uh, some reports to share with you this evening. Uh, first and foremost, and I want to thank Member Marilyn Lee, uh, who has been in contact with me regarding the Wahiwa General Hospital, um, acquisition with Queens Health, Health, uh, Center, uh, System, excuse me. I've heard this, uh, issue also from the Wahiwa community as well as Milani residents. Um, I want, I'd like to report out, you know, I've been reaching out to the Queens Health Systems, um, for the past month. And we've been in very constant contact regarding their, uh, ability to present to our board. I'm very pleased to share that I've invited them to present to our board regarding updates of the acquisition and services of the Wahiwa General Hospital, um, as well as the Koha Ridge Medical Center. And that'll be at our March meeting. So should you have any, should you know of any members of the community who have concerns about the, um, transition and acquisition of the Wahiwa General Hospital, please, uh, encourage them to come to the March meeting. Uh, that's when Queens Health Systems will be here, uh, to present. Um, following that item, I'd like to also bring to your attention, uh, thank you, members, for contacting me over this weekend. Um, regarding an email scam you may have received from a person impersonating me. Uh, just to share for the public's awareness, this issue, uh, actually affected all neighborhood boards across the island. And, um, if you notice at the Neighborhood Commission Office website, when you do contact, when you do take a look at the neighborhood board, um, memberships, it ha, it lists our names, right, since we are indeed public officials? And, um, of course, those of us who opt in to provide our email addresses, members of the public can, can, uh, contact us. This became a issue of security in which, um, an unknown entity, uh, probably not from Hawaii, did impersonate every chair of the neighborhood boards across the island of Oahu and, uh, took that chair's name and took that chair's email address, um, using a false email. They emailed all, uh, neighborhood board members listed on the NCO's website and cited, uh, the respective board's treasurer um, having problems with any money collections relating to the neighborhood board. That being said, I want to be, be very clear that, and first off, I want to thank everyone who's contacted me. I was not hacked. It was, it was merely an impersonation. This is a major issue that's circulating across all neighborhood boards, um, through all neighborhood board chairs who have been impersonated and feel very violated, um, in terms of their security. So I do agree that our Neighborhood Commission Office needs to increase the security of that website, um, as well as our, uh, public information and email addresses. Um, I want to reassure everyone that I was not hacked and your, uh, private information was not provided by, and, and my email address. Finally, I will never request money from you, so, so everyone take note at the time that I, uh, have said this. I won't be requesting any money via Zelle or Venmo. And, uh, members, as you all know, you all have my cell phone number, so please, you know, should you have any suspicious activity from someone who for some reason wants to impersonate me, please feel free to give me a call or send me a text and I can tell you, maybe that's not me. Um, but again, thank you for bringing this to my attention. And are there any questions? Uh, I, I, actually, that completes my report. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you. We're going to move on to community partnerships and community outreach. Alex, do you have a report to share?
Dear Chair, um, just wanted to say that, um, if you guys still have anything that we would like to, uh, reach out to the community on, for example, the Queens Health Center. Uh, we can make a post about that and encourage people to come out to the board and ask any questions in case they have any concerns. So if you have anything like that, let me know. We can get something online, uh, whenever. So yeah, let me know. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Josie, for community recognition and service.
I have no report. If you, if anybody has anybody, someone that wants to, uh, you want recognized, please contact me. Thank you.
Martina for community maintenance and walk audit?
No report as of this time, but I'm working on fixing the form for reporting issues within the community.
Okay, and once that form is complete, please let us know so that we can upload. Uh, Trevor for planning, zoning, sustainable development and climate resilience?
Uh, no report for this month.
Skylar for transportation and Ompo? Dennis from Taiwan for military affairs and emergency management?
Uh, it's very interesting because the military here, business as usual, and all the people here act like nothing's happening. So what we read in the newspaper is probably not really accurate. Uh, yet underground, I can see a lot of preparation, emergency-wise. They're starting to label a lot of, uh, uh, what do you call that? Bomb sho, bomb shelters in different tunnels and stuff like that. So subtly, they're preparing. And I think sometimes we have to look at that in Hawaii and see if something similar to that can happen. And, uh, it also applies to earthquake. We just had one at the beginning of our meeting. And I said, "Well, it's fun to be here and I'll be back eventually." Okay, thank you.
All right, good to see you, Dennis. Thank you. Uh, Darsha for help, houselessness and human services?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I did receive some questions and commentary at the end of last month's meeting, so I did want to share that out to the larger public. The first was regarding what strategies we use to address hu, uh, houselessness. And so I did share out about the Housing First Initiative. Um, that's where we try to work towards permanent housing placement because it's kind of hard to think about, like, sobriety or stopping using drugs if you're worried about food, shelter, water, things like that. Um, and, uh, when they looked at those Housing First initiatives in Hawaii, they had a Hawaii Pathways Project. And that resulted in healthcare savings of about $6,000 per client per month. So it's cost-effective as well. Um, and also arrests were down about sixty-one percent. And that's a savings about, of about twenty thousand to thirty thousand per person who would otherwise be in like O-triple-C. Um, you can learn more about this at homelessness.hawaii.gov/housing. Um, other question I received was about a more chronic mentally ill people who are, you know, actively using. And I did want to share out that there is a triage and treatment center at IHS, the Imi Olapihua, um, Treatment Center. And so since June, they've been in taking people, getting them medication stabilization, getting them, um, sobriety stabilization. And so hopefully those types of programs will expand to some of our more difficult cases. Some people have been on the streets for decades and this program has helped people to transition into permanent housing. And then the last question I received was about services for veterans. So did want to share out again that for our veterans, we do have walk-in, um, services. Uh, it's, I believe ours is at Spark Motunaga up by Tripler. Um, and that's from seven thirty to three thirty, uh, seven thirty AM to three thirty PM. And of course, if you don't have access to like get up there, there is a number you can call as well. It's one eight hundred two one four one three zero six. And then you do option two and then option four. So that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Darsha. Uh, we're going to move on to Sabrina from Parks and Rec and Patsy Taming Central Wahoo Regional Park.
Um, I was given a concern from a community member regarding lighting at the district skate park. Um, I'm looking into it. If any board member, community member has any strong feelings either way, good lighting, bad lighting, no lighting, yes lighting, uh, I'd be happy to hear and entertain those thoughts. And we're going to be putting together something probably. And we're going to be putting together something probably, um, in the near future regarding this issue.
Okay. And last but not least, Marilyn for the Committee on Education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is a report that I received from Chris Ginaldo, who is the PCNC at Mililani High School. And there's a lot of stuff going on at Mililani High School, but I'll just, um, sort of skim the, the top of it. Um, don't forget about the popular taste of Mililani, which is, uh, in the upper parking lot and from 5:00 to 9:00 PM on the first, the last Friday of the month, because that really helps the school out. And then, um, the PTSO has a monthly garage sale and that'll be happening on the 7th of this month. And it's right out in the parking lot and anyone, anyone can, um, participate in this. You have to pay a $20 fee. Fees go, um, to support the PTSO. It's really a, a fun, uh, day and you can find some really neat stuff to, um, buy, I think. Um, and then, uh, Trojans have excelled at the Central District Science and Engineering, engineering fair. I'm not going to talk about each one individually, but there were 12 of them who did very, very well in the Central District Science and Engineering Fair. And they'll be moving on to compete in Hawaii State Science Fair. And that's a really important thing to hear about the school. And then last, Spring Break is, uh, March 18th to 22nd. And then from Mililani Uka School, um, Jake Kardashian is always very faithful about sending a report. And they are having a new club starting at Mililani Uka, and that is the Newspaper Club. Uh, students learning about news writing and journalism, and the goal is to publish a school newspaper. And they will also be pa- uh, participating with all the Mililani Elementary Schools in May on track. Uh, parent activities, grade levels are currently holding their parent activities where parents come to campus and participate in an activity with their child, which I think is a very positive thing. And they're having a STEAM night. And I, I don't know if you remember when I talked about, um, what STEAM means. STEAM actually used to be STEM, but they've added the A in STEM. And that stands for the arts, which is also a very positive move. And then also just one message came from Mililani Ika School from the, um, PCNC. And they're looking for volunteers who are interested in helping out the school. She didn't give me anything specific, but, um, if you're interested in volunteering at Mililani Ika, just give her a call and it's Mrs. Betts. Thank you very much, Chair. If any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions for Marilyn? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Okay. We're going to move on to the elected officials report. I don't see Nestor online for, uh, Congressman Case's office, but Tony's here representing Governor Green's office. So welcome, Tony. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm here on behalf of Governor Green's office. My name is Tony Schwartz. Um, just wanted to make mention before I answered questions that I had received last time, that very timely governor held a news conference yesterday with a major initiative, the One Ohana Fund. On March 1st, they will start taking applications for, uh, survivors of loved ones, uh, survivors who lost loved ones and also those who were seriously injured and hospitalized as a result of the Maui wildfires. There is a $175 million fund. Um, disbursement will go to the surviving family members who lost loved ones and also settlements for those who suffered traumatic injuries in phase one, phase two will be for damages to property. That will come at a later date. Um, with that said, if you have any questions about that, I, I'm happy to try to answer any of them. I also gave you his news release and the PowerPoint presentation. And if anyone didn't get it, it's on the table too. Um, and also it's on the governor's website. Um, as for the questions that were asked last time I was here, there was a question from Les asking about the, um, if the governor will be looking into ways to stop people from selling or realtors from selling to people outside of Hawaii in regards to, um, bringing housing back to local property owners. And while it is illegal to ban sales of homes, it may also violate the Federal Fair Housing Act to prohibit, um, home selling on the basis of national origin. But with that said, the governor has made it a priority to convert short-term rentals, vacation rentals to tourists for, into long-term residence. And he is working on trying to find other alternatives to get more housing back to local residents. He also wanted me to let you know that he is calling on his colleagues in the legislature to help by implementing new policies and reforms that overturn housing units to the long-term rental market. This will increase supply, bring down price in the local market and also help bring down the artificial and unfairly inflated global demand from visitors to our state. He said, says he will sign into law any bill that the legislature sends to him that will help move short-term rentals and vacant investment properties owned by non-residents into the local housing market to increase the supply. And he also is crafting a landmark piece of legislation that will provide tax amnesty to any owner of a short-term rental who chooses to sell it to help with the housing crisis. The sale of this kind to an owner occupier, local family, or to someone who turns in a home, uh, turns the home into long-term rental will be exempt from capital gains tax, conveyance tax, and general excise tax. The House Hawaii's Ohana Plan would start this fall and last for 24 months. And during this tax amnesty period, he will personally encourage short-term rental owners from around the world to sell their properties back to Hawaii's families. The second question I had was from Mary and it was about trailers on Maui used as temporary housing. You might've seen it in the news recently with FEMA mentioning that they are looking at possibly installing, uh, temporary homes, but that's only if there aren't enough direct lease units available to meet the number of eligible households. Um, FEMA has actually stopped asking for housing units as they have enough available inventory to house FEMA eligible survivors. But also the governor does acknowledge that people want to stay in West Maui. And he says that they are seeking 850 units in West Maui from property owners now using those properties as short-term rentals. So in order to offer up the short-term rental, he is urging people to go to a website, helpingmaui.org slash offer. And we're hoping people will step forward and fill in that void. Uh, he also mentioned there's a number of modular homes that will begin to, um, be dropped, he says, in Leali'i, uh, 270 in April and another 180 over the summer. That's all I have. Any questions? I'm here.
Okay, uh, members, any questions for Tony? Sabrina followed by Mike. Go ahead.
Um, I had a question regarding the governor's One Ohana program. It was a little unclear to me. Um, if a applicant applies for the 1.5 million dollars for the death of a, of a family member, is the 1.5 given to the family in full or is it per person that claims that the surviving member impact their life?
I have a feeling I know the answer, but I want to be certain. So can I bring that back to you?
And then the other question I had was if they do take part and receive the 1.5 million, are they waiving or barred from any further legal action against the state and Maui County in the future?
Um, are you, you're talking about for if it's involving a death?
Yeah.
Um, yes, they are waiving.
They are waiving the right.
Now, there was another part of it, the phase two part with housing. I just want to clarify. It does not change that you can apply for that one as well. It doesn't mean it's like, uh, you waived for both. You can, they're each separate.
Mike, go ahead.
Hope I'm not going over Tyler's head here. Um, the Department of Transportation, could we find out, uh, where they stand on widening Keppa Gulch Cam Highway? They, they were canceled it in 2015, but the growth of central Oahu was getting way out doing the two lanes through Keppa Gulch. They needed to expand it into a four-lane highway. But it turned into be a very costly project and they canceled it. Can we see where it stands now?
Check. Thank you. Emil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, quick question about the Ohana Initiative. You know, I see one of the biggest contributors are, is Hawaiian Electric Company, $75 million. Uh, I know that Hiko was blamed for the fire and was sued, I think. I'm not sure where the sue is, suing is right now, but what was the amount the Hiko was sued for? I'm just wanting to give, this is some kind of deal they reached that, you know, they will support something like that.
Uh, that would be something to ask the Maui County because the lawsuit involves Maui County. I don't have any information on that.
Okay, but, okay, that's, that's one. Second question is, uh, I just want to make sure the governor, governor is aware of it, but, uh, last week there was a meeting of election commission. And it was disaster in my opinion. I was present as a public. I couldn't say anything. But, uh, they didn't appoint any chief of election office. So the Scott Nago was supposedly the only one available, but they didn't reach any agreement. So we have election year and we don't have any chief election officer right now. And I know for sure that there was at least one applicant, Carl Dix, who was asking for the position and he was still ignored. So I'm not sure if, uh, this vacancy will continue because the deadline was February 1st and it's almost end of the month. And again, it's election year. So I think this is, this is not, uh, looking good for our state again. And you know, something with that survey which found Hawaii the most corrupt state in the nation. So just want to make sure that we have somebody already running the show because it's election year.
Members, are there any other questions for Tony and, uh, Governor Green's office? Trevor?
So I just have two questions related to, um, housing on Maui. Um, the first is, um, if the administration is able to identify specific properties that are currently being used as short-term rental units. Um, I understand that the Attorney General has objections, you know, regarding the constitutionality of prohibiting the sale of those properties or proper, the sale of residential properties in general to people outside of Hawaii. But, you know, would the, is the, is the administration, you know, would there anything be preventing the administration from simply, you know, initiating an eminent domain to purchase these properties, you know, for the purpose of housing wildfire survivors? And the second is that, um, my second question is, um, if there is a concern about in, you know, families turning down housing, um, elsewhere on Maui because they want to stay in, in West Maui. Um, has the state identified, um, lands, you know, that could be made available to build, you know, temporary housing, you know, for the purpose, you know, that could be used to house these people?
Take that back. Thank you. Members, are there any other questions for Tony or Governor Green's office? Members of the community, do you have any questions for the governor's office? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Okay, folks, we're going to move on. Um, unfortunately I received a, uh, some communication from Tracy Kubota today. She's unable to attend tonight's meeting. She has another community meeting that she must attend in her city capacity. She does send our community, uh, regrets and she will be here at our next, uh, board meeting in March, uh, to present for, uh, Mayor Blangiardi. We're going to go ahead and move on. And I see Councilmember Valo Kimoto is here tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair, members of the board and members of the community, both here in person and online. Uh, my name again is Councilmember Valo Kino Okimoto, um, representing District Eight. So all of you should have received my written report. These things, I get the luxury, you get the luxury of getting this at the end of the month. So a lot of things, um, come after the report is printed, but just some things that I wanted to add to it. Um, for legislative purposes, we did have our full council meeting today. So aside from some of the measures that were mentioned in this report, we were able to appoint a new commissioner to the police commission, Miss Laurie Foster. And I feel like the mayor has been putting forth some really good, um, appointees and we look forward to working with her. She just got, went through a final reading and she was appointed today to the police commission. We have committee week next week, um, it'll, and that'll be March 5th, the 5th to the 7th, and budget hearings will start on March 11th. And budget season is at a very exciting time for the city. We have a deadline coming up. Um, I believe it's in June. So we will start, be starting that process. Some other things that are pertaining to the district for the skate park that's in Mililani, we plan to put in a CIP request for the padding of the floor for the hockey rink. I should say exactly for the hockey rink, not for, um, the skate park, for the hockey rink. And today our resolution passed first reading, Reso 25, 24-50. And this is relating to the establishment of a Department of Ocean Safety. So this is relating to our lifeguards. Currently they're under the same department as EMS, but the resolution was brought up to look into, um, separating them. So there was a discussion on that and that went on to first reading. We're now going to committee. Um, we heard some concerns about, we have constant concerns about e-bikes. I know someone here mentioned it earlier. Uh, and my office gets it from every angle. So I have been working with HPD. I know right now there are rules. They're doing their best, but I would like to just put a little PSA out there for any parents who might see this. We did see that the news just took a story. The middle school, um, is setting, reminding us of the rules that 15 and under, you're not allowed to ride the bicycles. Um, so we want to encourage parents that if you do have a child who's under 15 to really, um, not allow them to do so because it's actually against the law. The police can't be everywhere at every time, uh, at all moments. So that's one thing. Uh, other things that are coming to our attention is the, the bikes in the, the parks, both the MTA Ravine Park, but also the city parks. I can't speak on behalf of the MTA, but I do know that that's, they're not allowed. And from our understanding, from the Parks Department, bikes are not allowed or permitted on the grass. And that's all bikes, uh, regular bikes as well as e-bikes. So we're just putting a PSA out there for anybody who might see this, that to help the police because it already is a law to not ride these, um, e-bikes, e-bikes, um, on our grass areas. Uh, from what I understand, they're only allowed on pathways. And it's the same rules that I, I mentioned for other bikes, no ramps, no racing, et cetera. Um, I know Tracy had wished to be here tonight, so I told her I put a plug in for our zoo. We still have, I believe, a few days left until March 4th. It's in the newsletter. If you could go on every day. Some people are going on from multiple devices, but as many times as you can, go to honololozoo.org and continue to vote. In the last days, they won't allow us to know the, the results, but the last we saw, we were standing strongly in fourth place. This would just be a great, um, opportunity to highlight something from the city. And today we passed, we had a resolution accepting some tigers and zebras, I think. So the zoo is always working on ways to improve the animals that are being brought in. Um, and I know that there was, thank you, um, Judy for being here. I know she's been working very, uh, um, diligently with my office, but just to kind of clarify, just in case you were wondering, I know I spoke with you briefly. Because of the, the current claim, I can't speak on the claim itself. Um, is my understanding that there's a pending one that you mentioned. I'm not allowed to also represent the MTA. That's MTA business. But I did reach out and I did get some information that you shared that it is in the Design and Covenants Rules, I think it's 3.02D, that, um, any common wall areas actually are the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain. I'm sure I, many people don't know this, so I would just encourage all homeowners to, if you have concerns, to go back to the Design and Covenants Rules. They're in there. It's just unfortunately, you know, with our busy lives, maybe we're not aware of them. But that is one thing, um, that will be very helpful. I can continue to, you know, work with the MTA and get in communication. Um, but as far as the, the trees, my understanding is that the Department of Forestry does maintain the trees and they do their best to trim the tops. So they're not too top-heavy. I would just encourage everyone again to, if you're not sure, Mililani, we're a special community. We have our association. But there are certain rules that we have to abide by. Unfortunately, most times, like I said, we're not aware of them. So I would just encourage that. Um, and I think that was it. So, um, let me see if I missed anything else. I don't think so. But if you have any other questions, I will do my best to answer that at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Okimoto. Are there any questions from members of the board for the council member? Emile.
Quick question. So is there any enforcement for those people who will violate the rule for the fifteen years and under, for those bikes?
Yeah, you know, I've, I've worked, I've asked, I even asked Officer Munohi, who was here. They have to be caught in the act. And I think that's what's the hard, the hard thing. Because I even see some around, you know, gateway over here by Domino's. But if, if we can call HPD, they have to catch them in the act. And that's the hard thing. So I just really encourage the parents, or you can talk to your friends and neighbors. Right now, they have to be caught at the scene at the time. And so it's a little bit more challenging.
Caught means videotaped?
I actually don't know. I would discourage doing that for minors because of privacy. I would contact HFD, contact the police. I mean, if you see that they're frequenting a park, you know, a lot of them, they go through and they're going to certain parks, they do this in the ravine parks and they go through certain routes that they make. And you know that you see them frequently at the same times, I would contact HPD. I know one, one, there was a day where HPD, combined with MTA, and actually went out there to, to watch the ravine park. But for some reason, that day, there wasn't a lot of traffic. Although many other days, they're, they're witnessed, they're viewed doing that.
Any other questions for Councilmember Okimoto? Questions, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I see a lot of kids, it appears they're going to Mililani Middle School, riding e-bikes. And go to school, but I'm, I'm sure they're under fifteen.
Right.
What are you going to do there? I mean, that's how they're getting to school.
Sorry, I would just correct, if I mentioned HFD, I meant HPD. So contact HPD. And to answer your question, this is, we, my office did a little tour around the campus, the middle school. And that was one thing that was brought up. So Officer Munohi again shared with me that in the news, Mililani Middle School actually just came out with a statement saying that they, because of the law that's already intact, they are no longer going to be allowing students to bring their, their bikes onto campus because none of those students should be fifteen or older. So that's what the middle school, they're taking, they're being proactive and not allowing it onto their campus.
Yeah, but I mean, that's how they get to school. Like a school bus doesn't go there. They've canceled school buses in certain areas.
True, they could still use maybe the regular bicycles, but just they're not allowed to ride e-bikes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Councilmember Okimoto? Yes, Judy, actually Judy, can you approach the mic so that your question is recorded? Yeah, I'm sorry, it's for the folks in O'Leary and YouTube.
As I was looking over the notes that I had printed out from the internet, there's this rules and regulations relatively.
Can I have you go closer to the mic again?
Planting and maintenance of street trees. And one of the planting and maintenance highlighted in the, in the listing was that the department shall perform all general maintenance of tree, street trees. However, the abutting property owner shall be responsible for watering and weeding around area, around trees. Is that, because Mililani does the upkeep of the trimming of the weeds and grass? So does that mean that they're the ones to water the trees or is it us again?
Thank you. So, so Mililani Town Association is responsible for the common areas. That's, that's under the Mililani Town Association jurisdiction. Anything city-related is going to be a city response. And so if you're talking about the trees that are city trees, the association doesn't have that responsibility. From my understanding, again, I'm not here representing the association. I'm just trying to answer their questions. From my understanding, the city should take care of their, fully under their jurisdiction and the association does theirs. You had the concern, I know that your, the tree is, there's a pending investigation for your issue. But then pertaining to the wall, I found out that we have, the MTA has rules. The homeowners are actually responsible for the, to maintain the common area walls that are part of, are near your property, from my understanding.
What does that mean to maintain the wall? I mean, we can't even add, so maintaining means?
Again, I would have you ask the association what exactly that means. And so I'm not here to, I can't represent the association.
They don't own it and so he doesn't know who owns it. And so I said, does that mean that the homeowner is responsible? And they said, so that's why I reached out to Scatling Hook and they didn't have an answer. So I, I thought maybe the board, neighborhood board could help clarify this.
From my conversation with the association general manager today, they, I, I'm not sure, I wasn't in the conversations that you had with them. But I think they, they seem to understand that it was an MTA wall. However, the maintenance of it was, is for the common areas, that's what I was instructed. So I'm not sure exactly what kind of conversation you had with them.
To my neighborhood, that maybe they should all congregate and meet with city and county or come to the neighborhood board meetings and discuss this because it's a big issue. I mean, there's not many people that I know of that know that they're responsible.
The general manager told me that the MTA actually, well, we meet every, the board meets every month and the annual meeting is coming up next month. But if you would like, we can, we can connect, we can offline, we can connect with the general manager of the MTA. And so we can get any uncertainties clarified, that's, that we're all allowed to discuss. I want to make sure that you get your answers.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you so much. What I'm hearing is that this is a determination made by the homeowner association, Mililani Town Association. And this is, this is the communication that they are providing the resident regarding maintenance of an MTA-owned wall. So I, I do agree with Councilmember that it's more appropriate to take that to the Mililani Town Association. If someone could let me know when the upcoming meeting is.
Let you know right now, give me a second.
It is in March, it's very soon, Judy. March 13th, March 13th, so rec three. This would be, this would be something where you can, Judy, you can talk with your neighbors.
I think it's the 20th, did we move it? Okay.
Okay, March 13th, rec three. This is an appropriate conversation to have with the MTA Board, Board of Directors.
Bring my army with me.
I think so too. We'll see you there.
And we'll, we'll do our best to continue communicating. But I know because it's pending litigation, there's only so much from the city that I'm allowed to share. But I can definitely be the caveat to, or help you bridge the communication that the MTA is providing you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Final questions for Councilmember Okimoto? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and Judy, March 13th, okay. All right, I see Kelly Anaya is online with us, representing Councilmember Matt Wires Office. Kelly, over to you.
Chair, can you guys hear me?
If you could turn up your volume, we can't hear you.
How about now, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Again, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office, thank you for having me tonight. I'm sorry if I repeat this, but I couldn't hear if Councilmember Okimoto mentioned about the Honololozoo being nominated for one of the best in the nation. So please be sure to get your votes out. Also, Councilmember Wire did do a homeless info briefing a couple of weeks ago in committee. I'll go ahead and put a link to the, the rebroadcast of that meeting. And if you wanted to skip ahead to the forty-two point seventeen mark to just watch the info briefing, I'll go ahead and put that information in there as well. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge Board Member Gustafson's concerns about, I guess, elected officials attending in person or on Zoom for these meetings. I will let Councilmember know of her concerns. And if anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I'd be happy to take them back.
Members, any questions for Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office? Any questions from the community? Seeing none, thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next we have Senator Michelle Kidani's office. Is the senator here or representative? Trevor, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Trevor Nagamine, I'm here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani. I will forward Sabrina's concern about Senator coming here in person, having her actually here instead of me as her representative. Just a couple of highlights from her newsletter. So Senator would like to congratulate the Mililani High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team on being HHSA Division One State Champions. We also have some bills on the first page that are currently moving through the legislature. So first lateral has already come and gone. And so we have first crossover coming up in a couple of weeks. And so we're kind of in that point where like, everything is going to either judiciary, Ways and Means, or Consumer Protection. And then if any bills, once those get through those committees, if they get through those committees, then they would be up for a third reading on the floor for a vote by the full Senate. And yes, Senators, another member, one of Senators' session staffers, Lakai Burrows, also gave a moment of contemplation for the Senate recently. So a quote from his, from what he said is, "Perhaps, perhaps however, we can take the time to learn about those who are different from us, those that sign in opposition to us, and ask questions, analyze and reflect. Perhaps we can come to a point where we are able to place ourselves in the shoes of someone else and come to some understanding of why they think the way they do or why they feel the way they do." So other than that, I would be happy to take any questions. Oh, yes, questions from January. So Darsha, you had a question about the Grow Our Own Initiative with the College of Education at UH Manoa. So in general, the Grow Your Own, Our Own Initiative is only available for people who are pursuing a master's. However, there isn't, there is an exception for people who are seeking a bachelor's, specifically in elementary school learning and Hawaiian language immersion, just because there is a very high need for teachers with that kind of training. And so that specific bachelor's program is also included in the Grow Our Own Initiative. However, other bachelor degrees are not. And then I believe it was Mary who had a question regarding Senators' position on cannabis. Is that right? Did anyone get the office, get back to you already or no? Okay, yeah, so there is a bill moving through the Senate right now. It's going to be, Senator has not had an opportunity to vote on it yet. This is Senate Bill 3335. This would essentially establish like a regulatory structure for the state of Hawaii to legalize the sale of marijuana or cannabis, whatever you want to call it, and set up a structure for it to be regulated and taxed. And so Senator, she is not committing to support or oppose the bill at this point. She's, her inclination is to oppose, but she's trying to keep an open mind because she wants to see, you know, what kind of testimony is submitted to Ways and Means. Because the bill will be heard in Ways and Means later this week on March 1st. So other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Members, any questions for Trevor representing Senator Kidani's office? Any members of the community who have any questions for Trevor representing Senator Kidani? Seeing none, thank you so much, Trevor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Sabrina, I try to be good.
All right, I see that David Cho is online, representing Senator Donovan Dela Cruz's office. Please proceed, David. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Evening Chair and everyone. I just want to let you guys know that the legislature is just about halfway through. We are actually hitting first decking, which is where Senate bills will be crossing over to the House. And that will be the deadline for this Friday, which many of us will be working until midnight to receive committee reports and bills that we've passed in the last couple of weeks. But in the next coming weeks, the Senate will be receiving the House's draft of the budget bill, which will entail a lot of details. And we've had a very significant change in our, I guess, our trajectory and where we're going to go. You know, for the Maui wildfires, we were projecting having to spend $200 million in this upcoming fiscal year and then saving, spending $100 million in each fiscal year for the next three years, totaling for $500 million. But we're potentially looking at spending as much as $600 million by this June because there are eligibility discussions on survivors with, you know, Maui wildfire households, whether they're eligible or ineligible for FEMA reasons. So there are a lot of unknown expenses. So we're currently looking at, oh, what do we have to do to pass a balanced budget? And that's a lot of the discussion that's happening right now in the Senate. Actually, tomorrow, if you're interested, at 9:30, the Ways and Means Committee is meeting and having these discussions with state entities as well as the Maui County agencies to discuss housing options for both interim and permanent for the Maui households who did lose their properties. But the really big discussion right now is between the FEMA eligible and ineligible to see how we can get those numbers contained. Because right now, we are spending about a million dollars per day to house the FEMA ineligible as well as paying 10% cost share with the federal government to house the FEMA eligible victims who did lose their homes. And if you calculate that over all the way till June, the, the administration projects of spending up to $600 million in the very worst-case scenario. So we're really trying to focus our discussion tomorrow on that, around that discussion. And then seeing what we can do to pass a balanced budget again. And then trying to see what options there are to get these individuals into housing, either in interim or permanent housing over the next year or so. But then I can take back any questions. I know there was one follow-up from one of the board members about the legalization of cannabis in this upcoming session. So Senator has been working with his colleagues. Senator Kidani's representative mentioned the bill number. And we are having that for discussion this Friday, so we'll see where that goes. But Senator did agree to hear the bill to allow for it to go towards discussion. And then if the members do choose to support it, then he and the other committee chair, who is jointly hearing the bill this Friday, who is the CPN Chair or Conservative Protection Chair for the Senate, then we will see where the decision-making goes this Friday and how the testimony comes in. But other than that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, David. Members, are there any questions that David can field for Senator Dela Cruz's office? I see Darsha has her hand up, go ahead, Darsha.
Hi, I did see from the Ways and Means Committee that they were requesting to the Department of Education a 10 to 15% decrease in the budget. And this is supposed to be going towards obsolete or redundant programs. And I'm wondering what safeguards are they putting in place to make sure that it actually does go to cut out those obsolete or redundant programs versus what seems to happen every single time that we cut the budgets for DOE, which is that we cut teacher positions and their pay, we reduce academic supports for our most vulnerable students. And then we also make teachers beg for supplies for their classrooms. So I'm wondering what safeguards are they going to put in place to make sure that these things don't happen again? Because it seems like that's what happens every time. And then the second part of my question is, my understanding that is from your report and from, you know, what I've seen so far, is that a lot of these budget concerns are related to, you know, that tragedy that happened in Maui. And I'm wondering, with Governor Green's visit to Washington DC to ask for more support with federal funding, if that federal funding does come in, will that affect us having enough money to fund our budget? Thank you.
Thanks, Darsha. So I'll answer your first question. So the- So the 10% to 15% reductions weren't. So when we talk about the base, we talk about what was allocated for the previous year. But then there are always new asks that come in. So not just what's in the base, but what has been added to in the governor's current budget request. So it's all encompassing of like what is in the current budget request, what is in the current budget request as well as what's in the base to see what can be reallocated. Because when we're looking at potentially spending $600 million in the current fiscal year and then not knowing, not knowing what the horizon kind of, the unexpected horizon for us and in terms of what our obligations are, that is the real unknown. So we were just, the Ways and Means Committee and Senator, as well as his members, were looking for scenarios on where and how badly we could be affected in terms of having to pass a balanced budget. And in terms of the governor's visit to DC this, earlier this week, that was something, that's something that you would have to ask his representative because FEMA can extend and continue to house the, pay to house the FEMA-eligible households, but that's not a guarantee. The extensions are never guaranteed. So if that does happen, then that is great news for us. But there's no, there's not 100% guarantee that that will happen. So that's something that's up for discussion when that time comes. And I believe that's in February of '25.
Okay, are there any other questions for David from Senator Dela Cruz's office? Any other questions for the members of the community? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, David. We're going to move on, and I see that Representative Amy Perusso is here online. Over to you, Representative Perusso.
Aloha, Chair and Board members. Good evening. So I've already shared my newsletter with Rachel, and hopefully she can circulate it or at least attach it to the minutes. It's pretty extensive. Just a couple of highlights. As David mentioned, we are seeing the House agenda kind of shape up and get ready for crossover, and the same is true of the Senate agenda. We, we have some decent bills, I think, in higher education, specifically two that were generated by students. One around grad student unionizing and the second around fixing the summer tuition problem that I think are promising. And then the teacher apprenticeship program, which would strengthen that grow our own pipeline that Member Lee was talking about. Right now, I would say, as the Finance Committee meets, we are also really concerned with the emerging new fiscal situation. And I think, you know, the, we are looking at trying to actually create a creative and kind of holistic approach to this budget problem rather than going straight to base budgets and asking for a 10% to 15% cut. We're really looking at the ways in which we can tap into the rainy day fund. We also, that is currently at $1.5 billion. We also have the Hurricane Relief Fund currently at $500 million. So, and we have other pockets of money that we can tap into. So to try to avoid the kind of catastrophic base budget cutting that not only hurts our working families who are employed by the state, but then also those who depend upon the state for social services and support. So that budget question looms large, and we do need to address it. But I'm hoping that we can bring the best minds together and have a really creative and innovative way to addressing this and kind of avoid the pitfalls of the past. I want to mention, because it's, the topic has been coming up, it's just starting to surface. But as a result of the Maui wildfires, we're also seeing folks condo association and individual private homeowner insurance rates rise. So in the case of condo associations quadrupling, in the case of private homeowners, we see it doubling. So one of my colleagues, Adrian Tam, he is working to put together, they put together a town hall, and I'm going to put a link in the chat for folks. And unfortunately, at this point, they aren't having any kind of virtual options for joining. But that's something that we may want to have some conversation around out here. Maybe we want to organize a town hall meeting about that because I, I feel like the increased risk after the Maui wildfires and given our new climate context, it's going to be a challenge for, for most property owners. So looking forward, I think we might want to think about planning something around that. And I'm grateful that the Chair is going to be hearing from Oahu General because that's another source of consternation for our district. The last thing I'll mention is, I was really proud to see Millilani High School and Millilani Middle School performing at Leleho High School at the North Parade of Bands last Friday. They were amazing, and I was super proud. So yeah, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions for Representative Perusso, members? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the community for Representative Perusso? Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have Representative Matsumoto here with us in person tonight. Thank you so much for coming. Please proceed with your report.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, that's where I'm at. Obviously, we're heading over into crossover soon because I am exhausted. But good evening, Chair, members of the board. So I have three different handouts for you today. So I'm going to start with, this is our bill package for the 2024 session. So if you live in District 38, you should be receiving this tomorrow. Just dropped it off at the post office today. Some of the big highlights here is we are having two town halls coming up. So the first is a Personal Safety and Disaster Preparedness Town Hall. That's on March 14th at Millilani Maoka Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So we're going to have the Honolulu Police Department, the Honolulu Fire Department, Hawaii Division of Forestry and Wildlife, and State Department of Transportation to talk about a lot of those top issues facing, a lot of the concerns that we had coming back, our surrounding crime, but also with the fire that we had up in Millilani Maoka. Many people were concerned about especially having another emergency access road leaving Maoka. And so there's been a lot of movement with that. I was able to meet with the Department of Transportation, Castle &amp; Cook, as well as the Maoka Neighborhood Board Chair, and have identified a emergency road for Maoka. And so they've been working on that. So a lot of those updates are going to be at that meeting. So really encourage everybody to come if you're able to make it. The next is our legislative update town hall, and that's going to be April 12th at Millilani District Park from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That one is going to be focused on bills going through the legislature. Really great to show up to that one because that's going to be happening before our final votes and especially happening before we head into conference. Any of that feedback that you have would be, I'd be really appreciate to have it at that time. I'd also like to mention, put on your calendar, we have our Capitol Talking Tour coming up. It's Thursday, March 21st, from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. That's happening during spring break. So if you have kids in school, please bring them. We'd love to have them come down. So we're going to do a tour of the state Capitol. They can, you know, we're going to also be able to see a committee meeting and then also a legislative session where they can be announced in the chamber. So please mark your calendars for that. On the inside, I'm not going to go through every single one, but these are, this is my 2024 bill package. And I'd like to mention, as we go through, the second handout that you got was our District 38 survey. And so I, all of the bills that I introduced this year in 2024 were based off of that community survey. So the top five issues that came back when we asked people, what are the top issues you feel facing our state? Were cost of living, housing, crime and safety, government transparency, and homelessness. So we, I put my entire bill package surrounding those five issues. I'd also like to mention, I really appreciate when people fill out that survey and talk about the bills that matter most of them. So we have that extra final area. We also introduce bills with constituent requests. And so we did introduce, when you write in and you call in and you ask for us to introduce bills, we can often make that happen. Again, one of the difficulties though in the House is we do have bill introduction limits. The Senate doesn't have that. But in the House, we're restricted to how many bills that you can put in every year. I still have three bills moving through the legislature, two regarding housing and one with human trafficking. So watching those as they hopefully cross over to the Senate in the next five days. And then I did want to mention also, testifying, as you all know here, is so important in the legislative process. And so we did make a video on how to testify in the state legislature. I will admit, it looks a little bit like a Hawaiian Airlines safety video. So just a warning there, but it tried to do something fun to get people to actually testify. I can't tell you how many times that there are bills in the legislature and there's like one person that testified on the bill or even nobody. So please get involved. And then again, on the back is the survey, the survey results, but you have the entire printout. Going now to my final handout, which is the newsletter for this month. There's a lot of things, as you all know, that were happening. The Character Counts Fair, that was the biggest character counts fair I've ever seen. We went from like a few booths to an entire carnival. So that was a very exciting event. We have a lot of things, and Tracy has done a really good job of advocating for the zoo. So I also have a really fun QR code shaped like a paw print if you'd like to vote for the zoo. So Tracy, when you're watching this later, everybody has given the zoo shout out. We've done our job there. I got to do art projects with other Millilani students when they have the artisan in the classroom program. And then a lot of different things that have been happening at the Capitol in the last month. I'm not going to go through each and every one of them because that would take all night, and I will finish my report there.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, just remembered. Women's Legislative Caucus, I'm still a co-chairman, and we are having our Easter baskets on March 27th. Anybody who would be willing to get involved, please contact my office. We have five organizations that we're giving to this year, and so please again, reach out. The Maui wildfires has been a big thing, but they've also, a lot of our organizations that we work with said they've been really having a hard time being able to service their clients. And so this year, more than ever, I think we're really needing to focus, and the Easter baskets is a great way to do that. Now I'm done.
Thank you so much, Representative. Does anyone have, do any members of the board have any questions for Representative Matsumoto?
Yes, Mary. Thank you for that presentation. I hope you share the findings of your survey with your colleagues because it's very clear, nobody wants legalized recreational cannabis. I don't know why people are still thinking about it. We've known that this could happen for years. But what I really want to ask about is HB 2585 relating to theft. Because I've heard, a friend of mine has a son who's a police officer from another place and was in like Longs and tried to stop a shoplifter and was told that, no, we let them steal. So I'm, I'm glad we are going to do something. Can you tell me a little bit about that bill?
Yeah, so currently in the Hawaii state statute, there's nothing specifically for organized retail crime. There's other states that have now made that very specific. So it's also following the penal code. Unfortunately, this bill is dead. It's not moving anymore. But I do think it's something that we need to look at as it's something that's happening more and more here in Hawaii. I was in Denver a few months ago for a conference, and I've never seen it happen in front of me. And I was in a store and somebody was, just came in, took a whole bunch of stuff and walked out. And the guy I was checking out with was like, oh, they got another one today. I go, how often does this happen? Because I've never experienced in person. He goes, about five to 10 times a day. So this is a huge thing happening across the country, and it's trickling into Hawaii. And we don't have anything within our statutes specifically targeting organized retail theft. And so that was something that I hope the legislature will take another look at in the years to come.
Are there any other members of the board who have questions for Representative Matsumoto? Josie?
Hi, this is to you and all the other elected officials. I know she keeps bringing up about marijuana. So I, it's a gateway drug. It's a drug that where people will experiment on first. I take it very personally because when I was 15 years old, my best friend from Millilani High School got high after school. He got wasted. And the drugs were not as strong then as they are now. He got stoned, and he got behind a wheel of vehicle, and he was involved in a single vehicle accident that took his life. Caused because he got stoned, okay? I was 15 at that time, so thank you. It is, it is important. It's not something that should be passed.
Yeah, and for those who can't see the survey and are online, for, we got back, we needed 309 people fill out the survey, almost close to that 400 statistical number. But we had 214 people that were in opposition, 53 said yes, and 36 were undecided. So it was about 65% of the residents of Millilani that responded that were in opposition.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the board who have any questions for Representative Matsumoto at this time? Or members of the community, any questions for Representative Matsumoto? Seeing none, thank you so much for all that information. Okay, last but not least, I see that Representative Lachica is here online. Welcome. Please proceed with your report, Representative.
Hello, Chair, members of the board. You do have a copy of my newsletter that was distributed. We dropped it off real quickly. Then I also pasted the link in the chat. I shared it with Neighborhood, I don't think I have Neighborhood Board Assistant Rachel's email. So I'll try and get that so that next time I can email that to her as well ahead of time. So for my newsletter, we've heard as a member, Vice Chair of the Education Committee, we heard over 200 bills, a lot on the DOE budget, as well as school safety, bullying, cyberbullying, mental health, all the support services needed for our kids. Over the last, it's been a very busy last few weeks. And the bottom of the inside cover on the left side is just highlighting a new mural that was done by Millilani High School alumni, donated by our, materials donated by our local city mill, and then painted by our students of the Moolelo Aho Pua mural, which really just speaks to the cultural and historical significance of our area. And that can be found in one of the portables in the corner where we have the community garden. So check it out next time. They have an open community day, which is once a quarter. And then for the right side is my bill package. There's, I have about five or so bills that will be moving on to the Senate. And then there's a few Senate bills that are also moving to the House. So the school bus, which is one of my top priorities, is addressing our school bus driver shortages. So those are still moving. Mahalo to Chair Bass for submitting testimony on the Homelessness Task Force. So some of the, our House members expanded, I wanted to expand that bill for other governmental properties so that also passed finance, yeah, can't write this, this week. And then school meals is something that was championed by Millilani High School students. I was so happy to see them testify in House Finance today along with a couple of teachers. It's something that they really want to bring back. As you know, the Aina Pona program was a huge success at the high school. And Millilani High School got to 20% of procuring local ingredients for school meals. And so they want to advocate for that. Finally, some community things, it's not in the web, it's not in the newsletter, but we have been, during this recess, we just have done a lot of district-related events. I got to join Representative Mato. I got to join Representative Matsumoto last Friday, I think it was. It was a very, very rainy day, but on a neighborhood security watch at Mililani Maoka, and along with community members and different church groups. And then I did a site visit today at Wayava Correctional Facility, along with our Corrections Military Affairs Committee. It was good to see that program. It's a minimum security that really focuses on reentry. So a lot of rehabilitation for our offenders there. And then I do know that for, maybe, I think for the after decking, if the, if the board would like to continue providing testimony, please let me know. If you'd like to be able to put it on a, I know in Maoka, they put it on the agenda for the board to be able to vote on it and support some of the legislation. Just let me know, and happy to present on those as well. And then finally, I think in response to the cannabis, marijuana, it wasn't heard in the House, recreational marijuana, but Matsumoto and I did vote no on the floor on a bill. I think it was House Bill 1596, which would have decriminalized marijuana, as well as kind of lowered the age of, you know, possession of drug paraphernalia. So we said some remarks on the floor for that bill. And I think that covers the rest of my report. I did want to mention that there was an error in the number for the homelessness text number. So we corrected that number. That's for Kialaho West Oahu, I also met with them a couple of weeks ago, just to go over how they're expanding, because they took over the contract for Achieve Zero for providing homelessness services. So that is a 24/7 number. It goes to all of their field staff. So they're still struggling to fully staff the Central Oahu team. There's a North Shore team, Central Oahu team, and a Leeward team. So right now, our one case, our one field manager is split between Pearl City area and then Mililani. But hopefully, they'll be able to fully onboard staff soon. Mahalo, any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much, Representative Lachica. Members, are there any questions for the representative? Are there any members of the community who would like to have any, address any questions to Representative Lachica at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Okay, folks, we're gonna go into the announcements. Just as a friendly reminder, our next meeting will be Wednesday, March 27th, here at Mililani High School, H Building, 7:30 PM. And of course, you can catch this broadcast on Olelo Channel Focus, channel number 49, every second, the second Thursday, 9:00 AM. And Olelo Channel views 54 every first and third Saturday. Did I say that right over there? Just double-checking. Okay, without further ado, are there any other announcements to be made at this time? Seeing none, thank you, members. We are adjourned.